It's going to start recording here in a second. There it goes.
There it goes. Okay, before we get started, I want everybody to take heed to the memo that's up on the screen. The meeting is being recorded. If you have public comment, please submit it to G. Lippincott at WestRockHillTownship.org. We'll be taking comments at the end of each segment, or when a topic is discussed, or general comments will be discussed at the end. If you're on the video, you can mute and unmute yourself at the bottom of the screen. And dial-in participants can use star six to mute and unmute their phones. We expect everyone to please stay on mute when you're not talking, because it does disrupt the whole meeting. Having said that, welcome to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors meeting for July 15, 2020. I call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, announcements. Oh, first of all, I will ask if there are any public comment on the agenda items. Greg, have you received any?
No, I have not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. Announcements, there will be an executive session for legal issues being held directly after this meeting.
And, and, and real estate.
And real estate. Okay, that was an addition. Thank you. There will be an executive session for legal and real estate after this meeting. The consent agenda this evening includes the June 7th meeting minutes, the wind plan review status, escrow release, and vouchers, the emergency services report, the building zoning and permit, building permit report, public works report, conservation committee report, resolution 2020-13, which, to increase the required number of plans for land development submission, the Gavin subdivision, LD 604, milars are available for signature by the supervisors, and the treasures report and payment of bills. Greg, I will ask you to discuss the treasures report, please.
Sure. The treasures report, the general fund, $1,034,694.41, highway aid, $232,245.29, open space, $1,071,025.34, the park fund, $24,118.64, the equipment fund, $17,505.22, highway capital, $129.23, the street light, $36,945, the general fund reserve, $371,482, open space, Manderfield, sewage maintenance fund, $177,935.62, the stormwater fund, $7,547.69, and the last one, the escrow fund, $606,716.31. You also all bill.
Thank you. Do any of the supervisors have any questions or concerns about the consent agenda?
None from David.
None from Jay.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There aren't seeing none. It passes. Next up is confirmed appointments. Mr. Cliff Cole, Quakertown Compressor Station.
Hello, we'd like to thank the supervisors for granting us a confirmed appointment. We have a group of concerned citizens about the Quakertown Compressor Station. We really want our residents to know that this is not a done deal. Adelphia still needs the following. They need the PA DEP's erosion and sediment control permit, and they also need the Army Corps of Engineers approval. As far as the DEP goes, they are under a, from July 2nd, they're under a 60-day review for incomplete items on that application. We have 10, we have, I'm not sure how many it is, we have questions that we would like to ask the supervisors. And, but first off, I'd like to say that our group, the core members of our group are Pamela West, who's my wife, Cliff Cole, that's me, Kathy and Brian Warebach, who live on Wayland Road practically across from the compressor station, and Christine and Todd Shelley, who live across the street from Kathy and Brian. They happen to be in Richland Township. That's just the way it goes with the way the property line is. So our question for the supervisors, what is the current status of the permits and approval for the Adelphia Gateway Compressor Project?
And Mr. Cole, if you don't mind, I, some of these questions were engineering, some of them were legal. So we tried to funnel the questions, this is why we have you submit them in advance, to the appropriate person so that we can get you the best answer possible. So to ask that, to answer that first question, we sent that question to special counsel, who provided this, the following answer. To the best of their knowledge, in addition to the permits you mentioned, the ENS and the MPDES permits, they need approval of their CARST plan, they need a preparedness prevention and contingency plan, an inadvertent return in contingency plan, a noxious weed plan, a residential assessment and traffic management plan, and an unanticipated discovery of contamination plan.
Okay, thank you. Must Adelphia receive all their permits prior to starting any construction on the compressor station?
We also forwarded that question to special counsel, and it's harder to give you a direct answer on that question because a lot of it depends on the interaction between FERC and DEP. And so we can predict and we can say what the township thinks should happen, but that doesn't mean that FERC isn't going to give the go-ahead and tell them they can work on state permits while they're constructing. I was surprised at the leeway that FERC gave Adelphia to get items complete after they began construction.
Okay, I understand. You really can't tell me a lot about that, so can I move on?
Absolutely.
How does the township intend to monitor Adelphia's construction activities?
The township has no authority under state or federal law to monitor Adelphia's construction activities. It would, we can't go on site. It's private property, so the township will not be monitoring or inspecting Adelphia's construction.
That's very sad to learn. How will the township address concerns, complaints by residents regarding any site activity? How will Adelphia be held accountable?
Well, FERC indicated that the township, that FERC would remain in a supervisory capacity, retain jurisdiction over this project even after completion. So if the residents, the people who can see from their houses what's going on, if the residents feel that something's going on that shouldn't be going on, or if they have specific concerns, we still a party status, FERC still has jurisdiction, communicate to the township, and we will pass those concerns along.
Okay, thank you. Does the township anticipate a start date for, 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 to begin on the compressor station? I think you basically already answered that question. Has, have any emergency preparedness or contingency plans been made by West Rock Hill Township in case there are emergencies associated with the compressor?
Yeah, that, and the township talked to the emergency management coordinator, and there are plans in place in the event of an emergency involving the compressor.
Do these include evacuation plans for nearby residents?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't think we, I think it would depend on the nature of the emergency, and Greg's ready to take his finger off mute. I can see it.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's ways that you can call out to certain residents. Bucks County Emergency Management has different ways for if there's an evacuation. We can get people within a certain area, just phone calls, but not everybody has phones, and so then either the police or fire police would have to go door-to-door. Just depends if somebody answers their phone or not.
Okay.
Nowadays, nowadays, there's not as many landlines as there are cell phones, and so then it becomes problematic, and we have to go door-to-door.
Well, then, then don't you think we need to get some kind of alarm system or something along that line? But, okay.
The five minutes are up, just so you know.
Since I've submitted the questions in advance, I would like permission to have them all answered. Is it possible for the board supervisor?
Okay, I would like, I would like to let Cliff continue through his questions and let each question get an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it possible for the board supervisor to sign off, just let me preface this, that at the last, two meetings ago, the board voted to enter negotiations into, with Adelphia, and was not able to tell the nature of them and any questioning we've had. But is it possible for the board of supervisors to sign off in an agreement with Adelphia prior to informing the public that an agreement was made?
No. While, as a matter of litigation, the board is allowed to meet and discuss these items in executive session, no agreement can be entered into without a public vote.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you. How many times have the board of West Rock Hill Township met with Adelphia since January of 2020?
We're not going to provide that information.
Okay. Has Adelphia applied for a use and occupancy permit for the former residents of Thomas Cuse and Rosemary Marion at 2950 Rock Hill Road?
Yes, they have.
They have applied for a residency permit?
Correct, yes.
Okay, does the West Rock Hill Township have plans to place, plans in place to monitor the air quality, water quality, and soil quality in areas around the township, especially near the Quakertown Compressor Site?
There are projects where the township has the authority under Pennsylvania law to do monitoring of soil and, and groundwater. This is not one of those circumstances, so there will be no monitoring specifically of the groundwater or soil around the compressor station. Never, in any event, does the township have authority under state law or federal law to monitor air quality. We simply do not have the technical capacity to do that.
So the DEP is the only place we could get that?
That's correct.
Monitor. Okay, thank you. What roads will emergency vehicles use in case there is a fire or other emergency at the compressor station? The local residents that are in our group are very concerned that the roads are very tight, and there's really not room to bring emergency vehicles in, so it's a concern we have.
Yeah, they'll have to access it through Richhill Road. That's the main road where the driveway is, and they'll have to come via Richhill Road.
And you think that's adequate?
Oh, I'm sorry. Greg muted himself. It's a matter of whether we think it's adequate. I don't think it matters. The roads are the roads. The roads are what's available, and the.
Well, Doug, haven't you read the news and see what happens when these things blow off? You know, they, not like, it's not like this hasn't happened, and it's not like it hasn't happened in Pennsylvania. And, you know, okay, that's, just seems very, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, Cliff, let's stay right with the questions. If you have other questions, they can be asked later.
You have, we have one more question.
Why didn't the board of supervisors appoint a legal advisor who's experienced in corporate negotiations rather than the township solicitor who does not specialize in this area law?
First, I think you realize.
I don't think it's appropriate for you to answer that question.
I'm gonna answer anyway. I, the township did appoint environmental counsel, who's been handling this at both the federal and state level. As far as my capacity to negotiate against corporations, I am qualified to do that, and I don't think that you're in a position to know what I'm qualified to do.
Okay, well, can the board make your qualifications public then?
We'll take that under advisement.
Okay. I'd just like to state that, well, first off, I would like to very much thank the board for allowing us to have this time. I would like to state that we did file a right to know, our group did file a right to know petition last month, and we were completely denied by the board of supervisors. And we are very disappointed by that, but we appreciate you at least answering these questions.
Thank you. Greg, are there any questions submitted?
No, there were none.
Okay. Thanks for seeing it. Cliff, thank you for your, your questions. We were able to answer most of them, I believe, and we do have some things to follow up on, so thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay, moving on. The committee report, planning commission report. Chris Thorstein?
All right, hello, everybody. Planning Commission met last night. We had two applicants. First was Fresco. You might recall that they had a building expansion plan submitted that we actually are, had recommended conditional preliminary, preliminary final. They are.
Did we lose Chris?
We lost Chris.
Yeah, he froze up.
I thought he fell asleep. Now you're back.
Now I'm back.
Yeah, you were just starting to talk about Fresco, Fresco.
Okay, well, that's my report for the night, so. Fresco, if you recall, had come in with an expansion plan, which we had recommended conditional preliminary final on, I think it was two months ago. They have since come back with a modification of that plan. They're looking to add 2,460 feet, 2,460 square feet to their plastics building, which, you know, it affects parking a little bit. They still, they still fall under parking requirements. The sticker with it was, with this loading dock, they, they needed to use some of the parking area for a tractor-trailer to be able to get to the loading dock. Now, they claim that the, the loading dock will be used four times a year, and that the parking area that would be, and that would, would need to use the parking area for employees, so it's, it sounds like it was easily managed to, to have the cars out of the way when they actually receive a delivery. The other stickler was that they have, their entrance and exit is a counterclockwise configuration. They would have to, for the delivery, to be able to jockey the truck around easily, they would have to change the direction of part of the, part of the layout there when the truck would come in, so they'd have to have flaggers and whatnot to allow the truck in. Another aspect of this, they have silos that are in pretty close proximity to this building. Right now, they're about 13 feet away from the building. They need to come into about one foot from this building. So they would need relief on setbacks for that, which they will have to go through zoning hearing. So aside from that, the fact that it's, you know, a four-time-a-year delivery where they'll, they'll have to deal with the parking situation. Planning Commission was comfortable with this new plan, you know, pending zoning hearing on the silo setback. So we are recommending conditional preliminary final on the plan, once again, on the revised plan. Now, that was it for Fresco. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Well, I have not. I sat through the meeting and think everything you were deciding upon, I was in agreement with, so I have no questions.
I have none.
All right. Second applicant was Tim Snyder with Butter Creek Builders. I'm sure you remember his plan. I think it's 54-ish acres that he's trying to subdivide into 13 lots. He has an original approved plan from way back when that had a large P-luke. He wanted to change that to a cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac was 1,650 feet long, which was 850 feet longer than what SADO allows. He had no emergency access, so we, you know, we bending to try to get some emergency access or shorten the lane. He came back with another plan last night. Widening, I guess you'd call it widening, widening the lane, having a center grass area with 14-foot lanes on either side of the grass area. So essentially, it would be a 20-foot, 28-foot partway with, with 14 feet at a shot with a divider in the center. He also shortened the length of the cul-de-sac by 150 feet, which is still nearly double the allowable length of the sap.
We lost you again, Chris.
Some type of emergency access, and it's a very general property. If you've seen the lot, if you saw the map you had last night with the topography, it's pretty easy to see that he's got some challenges with, with the lot. We were still, still uncomfortable with what he was coming up with. But we are gonna entertain, you know, hearing what the fire chiefs, fire marshal have, have to say about it. The township, road guys, you know, having this center grass area proposed, with how that would affect that. So we essentially sent him back to the, I wouldn't say sent him back to the drawing board. We did say we, we want, you know, entertain whatever the outside sources have to say about it, but noting that we're still uncomfortable not having an emergency access. So that's the long and the short of, of Tim Snyder's latest rendition of his subdivision there. So I'm sure we'll be hearing back from him soon.
Okay.
Questions on that?
I have no questions.
I have, I have one, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Chris, can you tell me how wide the area of grass in between the two cartways would be?
Yes, I can, and I'm sorry. He's claiming 20 feet. So, you know, you're looking at a.
20 feet of grass?
Yeah, so 48, we have 48-foot wide partway with a 20-foot section of grass in the.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other questions for Chris? Then I think we need to put on the floor a motion for the Fresco for conditional provisional final. Is that correct, Mary? Is that what we need?
No, I'm sorry. No, no, no. I'm trying to unmute, unmute, unmute. Okay, you got, no. When Steve, under Steve's report, he'll go through his review letter, and then you can authorize me to prepare a resolution if you want.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay. So we will wait. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions concerning the planning commission report?
All right, David, David calling it.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the planning commission report?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a comment.
Oh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right, maybe I broke up. I've attended the planning commission meetings for a year before I was elected, and I've continued ever since. And I know not a lot of people attend these meetings, and they don't see these gentlemen in action. And I'd just like to give a shout out to Chris, Alex, Tim, Andrew, John, and even to our new aldermen. To a person, especially last evening, they are so very professional. Their top priority is the best interest of our township. And I just want to acknowledge their efforts, their attention to detail, and to say thank you, planning commission.
And I will echo that. I, I've said it to them. I've never said it in this public meeting, but I completely agree with you, David. They do a fantastic job. They put a lot of time in besides those meetings. There's a lot of stuff to go over, so thank you to you and you and Chris.
Well, thank you. On behalf of the planning commission, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm very proud to work with these guys. Everyone is professional, and they, they all bring something to the table. It's, it's an honor to work with you guys.
Thank you.
I did have one other comment. I know it was in your consent agenda, the, the resolution for increased plans. We did discuss that last night, and, and we were on board, if that makes any difference at this point in the meeting.
Okay. Well, it's, it's good to have concurrence. Okay, all right. If there's nothing else for the planning commission, could I get a motion to approve the report?
I'll make that motion. Jake, how's it?
Thank you, Jake. A second?
David will second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There are no opposed, so it passes. Park and Rec report, Dave Wright?
All right, Park and Rec finally here. All right. We got two good events coming up. Should be a lot of fun. We have a month from tonight, actually. We have movie night in the park. We're gonna be showing the Addams Family. It's a nice, funly, family-oriented, kind of fun cartoon character movie. It should be exciting for, you know, a lot of, a lot of the people that'll come out with their kids and grandkids. We're gonna try and gather, start gathering around 7:30, hopefully 8, 8:30-ish. We're gonna start the movie, and we can get it rolling, probably around 8 o'clock, I guess, at that time, and get the movie started. There's gonna, we're not gonna have any kind of popcorn or any kind of beverages just because of all the COVID issues going on, so we're gonna exclude that, but remind everybody if they would like to, you know, bring refreshments themselves, that would be, you know, acceptable, mindful of cleaning up after themselves. Then we have, I can't tell you how excited I am. We've received the Veterans Memorial. We had it installed this past Tuesday. Was it, Greg?
It was yesterday.
I think, I think it was Tuesday. Yeah, Tuesday, yeah.
It was yesterday. I think so. Except for email I got from Susie. I just wanted to clarify. It was installed. It's beautiful. It looks exactly like the other ones might, except it's new. It looks fabulous. We're gonna have our dedication ceremony on November 8th, so it's a Sunday afternoon, 1:00 p.m. We'll have some newsletter, the fall newsletter will be coming out, and we're gonna have some articles in it with all the times, dates, and, you know, little publication of, you know, dedication to what's gonna be going on with the park and with the Veterans Memorial appreciation dedication ceremony on that day. We have, also, we have the Parks Happy. We started this week a park tree plan, a park bench plan for the park itself, for James Memorial. We're gonna start there. So the trees and the benches, we're gonna have a plan in, create it. We're a couple benches down from where we were in 2013, which is, you know, negligible. They coupled, we're down like 17-ish, somewhere around there, and looking to replace them, kind of update them. We have one actually that we had approved in the Park and Rec meeting. We, I'd like to, I sent pictures to Greg for the, to get it actually planted. It's a, it was a grandfather that had passed away from the baseball organization from Penner's Little League, and his family had donated one to the Percy Field, as well as one for the junior/senior field, which is gonna be just outside the fence in right field. So we were looking to get approval to get that one planted as one of the benches moving forward to be part of the park bench plan. And the Park Trees took a bunch of pictures. I got a PowerPoint presentation that we shared. Greg, is that something that we can put on the website? Easy enough for the Park PowerPoint?
Sure, we can. I can put anything.
Nice. So I'll put that out there. It just has some pictures of just some of the parks, or the benches, some of the areas of where the trees were cut down, some of the areas of just the park, just an overview to get an idea of what we're looking at. some of the areas of where the trees were cut down, some of the areas of just the park, just an overview to get an idea of what we're looking at overall. And then we're going to kind of put a game plan together so we can, you know, expand the benches, so that way there's a certain area maybe between each bench. So if there's, you know, a person that needs to sit down a little bit sooner than the next, it's, you know, we'll have a bench there. So we're looking to not fill the park with benches, but, you know, beautify it with them as well as the trees. I think that is all. Yep.
I think that's it.
Any questions? I have a question. I saw, I saw right before the meeting started, I didn't see the picture that was sent out with the new bench on it. But I guess my concern is that we're switching a design, and do you have a plan to switch all of them out, or are you switching out just one with a new design, or what's the plan?
We had conversations about this. This was a ready purchase. They had purchased it, so that's why we were going to, it's going to be right next to the baseball field. The plan moving forward, some of the older benches that have the thinner slots, the little one-by-threes on a bench, the old, old-school one-by-threes, and the newer ones are two-by-sixes, we're going to slowly migrate out some of the older ones as we do, and the ones that have plaques and memorial plaques on them, we'll replace them with new ones. So we were going to look at that kind of game plan, and we'll present that. We were looking at a newer version of the bench, but we didn't come to a, an exact confirmation if we're going to move forward with that new design. It's more of a metal-covered, steel-covered bench with like, what they do with the fences, I can't think of vinyl coating, I guess it is, something to that nature. We're looking at that, but it was, we still have to, you know, get some more information as far as that, but we're looking to do that, but obviously keep the cost down. So it will be a little, little migration.
So this particular bench is being put in as part of the Little League complex?
Yeah, it's right, it's just outside the fence. So the pictures that you saw, it's actually right outside the fence.
Okay, all right.
I have a comment. I'd just like to step back a minute. I went back and looked at the minutes. In April, benches were mentioned. A bench honoring Mr. Mann would be replaced, would replace an existing bench.
Yes.
In May, there was no mention of benches whatsoever. In June, a plan was being developed for benches. But again, no specific mention of anything for Mr. Mann. And now all of a sudden, we got a photograph of a bench that you'd like to have approved for placement in the park. The question I have is, I would like to see specs for this. I'd like to see what materials are of construction, the size, the color choices, the cost, and what expectancy.
Sure. It's, it's absolutely, it's, there's one written percy at the Walnut Street Field. I can send you specs if you need.
I would like to see them, and I would like to see them before I would go to approve any, any kind of such bench.
Okay. Okay, that's, so they're going to push the family back another month. May, we had conversations about John Mann's bench. It was just probably missed from the minutes. So, I mean, we go back and modify the minutes, but, I mean, they were approved already, but we had conversations every month since we started the conversation about the John Mann bench. That's why one of the newer benches moving forward actually is what Bob Struble had brought to the table, and we didn't solidify and complete answer as far as if we, you know, agreed to that, if we want to move forward with that kind of bench.
Okay, I guess my only comment, as I said, was I would like to see the benches to be uniform. If you're moving to a new standard, I would like to see what that standard is, that's all.
Okay.
I'd like to say one thing, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I do, I do support the new bench, and I also think that we should have act on John Mann's bench and get that done as well, wherever Polly Mann wants it.
Yep.
That's my, that's my comment. Thank you.
I haven't heard anything else about the John Mann bench.
I do have that there. We can, we have an idea that one of the benches to be replaced down by the, actually, it would be kind of looking over the back part of their field. So it'd be the one down by the smaller pavilion, be looking out there, and we were talking about having possibly a tree in association similar to its proximity. So it'd be kind of like a combination tree and bench, and we could have like a little brass plaque that would be next to that, as well as the plaque on the back of the bench. But we didn't confirm 100% as far as the bench that we wanted to use for John Mann.
So you'll come back later with that? Okay.
Correct. Yep. Yeah, because we have some time. We're going to do the same dedication on November 8th.
Okay, well, if we're putting this bench in as part of the Little League complex, and it's going to be up against the fence there, I guess I don't have a problem with that. I just, like I said, I would just, I really want to see all the benches uniform. That's
Oh, yeah.
That's important.
No problem. They're expensive, though, so that's why we're trying to cut.
They're very expensive.
Slowly migrate.
Yeah, you can't just, yeah, and we have no idea what they're going to cost yet, so. Yeah. Okay. Are there any other comments about the benches or anything else Dave spoke about, David or Jay?
I have a question or comment for David.
Sure.
Um, it concerns Little League safety rules. And I know that you sent us a copy of Governor Wolf's guidelines back in June.
Okay.
Major League Baseball has established new rules for COVID-19. They're 67 pages long and growing. They include masking dugouts, no spitting distance between fielders and baserunners, and so forth. What has Penrith Little League done to provide similar safeguards for these children, referees, coaches, and guests initially? If the Penrith School District must use the fields here, what are, what similar guidelines have been established?
Everybody's following state and local guidelines, so CDC guidelines as well as Bucks County Border Health guidelines. That was the requirement for the high school to be on the fields as well as Little League.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
As far as this one bench goes, let's put that up for a motion. Do we have a motion to allow this bench to be put outside in the, of the fence around the Little League area?
I'll make that motion. Mr. Kaiser.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'm not quite sure if I understand what the motion is for. I have no problem having a bench placed where, we had the discussion this evening, but we still haven't seen the specs for the bench, the size, the cost, or anything. So until we know what the bench is, it's pretty hard to approve the bench. We can approve the location of the bench.
David, this is a different bench that is going to be standardized for the park. This is one that is, that one of the Little League folks bought, put one over in Percival, and they wanted to put one at this here, at our park here, and it is part of the Little League complex there.
And how much does it cost?
Nothing. It's the family purchased. Sorry to interrupt you.
There's no cost to us.
All the maintenance and everything, it's purchased already. It was, they bought the two, they wanted to, the family's been with the league for 16 years, so, and the grandfather's-
I'll second the motion.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, passes. Do you have anything else, Dave?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the Park and Rec report?
So moved.
Second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Passes. Commission reports. Chief Lake, police report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The monthly calls of service for June 2020 for Penrith Regional Police Department is follows. The department handled 423 calls for service. Of those, 194 were in East Rock Hill Township, and 229 were in West Rock Hill Township. The department handled 11 traffic crashes, eight crashes in East Rock Hill and three in West Rock Hill. Five were reportable crashes, and six were non-reportable crashes. So our crashes are way down there. We did respond to 28 crimes. In East Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows: theft, criminal mischief, two fraud cases, two harassment cases, two ordinance violations, three dog law violations, one possession of marijuana, one disorderly conduct, three trespass complaints, and one assault. In West Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows: theft, criminal mischief, fraud, disorderly conduct, two harassment cases, one trespass case, three dog law violations, and two ordinance violations. There were three charges filed in June: harassment, DUI under suspension, and theft of services. There were 204 traffic details, 32 road details on Old Bethune Pike, issuing five verbal traffic warnings, 13 citations, and 23 written warnings, and officers also conducted 401 business checks. One thing I'd like to add that's outside the commission report is that our blood drive is tomorrow. Here at the station, I have good news that all these slots are filled, so there are no more slots available for that, and that's from 2 to 7. And that's the floor.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, Chief?
I have none. Thank you.
I have none. Well, can I have-
Comment.
Can we get a motion to approve the chief's report?
Mr. Collingwood has a comment first, Chairman.
Sorry, go ahead. I missed that.
Yeah, I just want to thank the chief for the increased police presence on the Cat Hill Bridge detour because of the increased traffic that it's created on some of the township roads, and I got some calls, and people were very concerned about it, and there's a lot more police activity over here, which I think is great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to the guys.
All right, great. Thank you. All right. I got a, a motion to approve the chief's report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I will second.
Thank you, David. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion passes. Joint Recreation Authority, that would be me. Well, last month, as I told everyone, we chose to not open the pool this year because of COVID-19 and the risk with, and the because of the risk and because of all the restrictions that were being put in, and we didn't have the manpower to move forward, and we knew that it would be a totally losing situation. I'm now hearing about some of the pools that did open. I know at least one of them reclosed today, and they just said that the, the fact that the cases of COVID-19 are rising again was just too much for them to handle, so I think we made the right decision. Now, one of the problems we've had then is that, well, we're taking this time to actually go out and look at the pool. We know we had some leaks. We had a diver come in last week, or last month, I'm sorry, we filled the pool and then had a diver come in, and he found a lot of small cracks. He was able to fix. He found a couple of large ones. We now know that what we have to do is cut out a section of the flooring in the, the shallow end. We have to replace the drain in the very center of the pool, and we have a broken pipe where the water leaves the deep end and comes back up to ground level and then down to the filter house. So we have to take out part of the flooring, and we have to take out, and like I said, part of the flooring in the shallow end, and we have to take out some of the decking up by the diving area. We, we believe that we're going to need about $30,000 to finish out the year, including these fixes. We right now have $6,000, and $5,000 of that has to go to the, the zip line when that comes in. So we are coming up well short. Normally, at this time of year, we would have, have had about $99,000 worth of revenue. This year, we had $0 in revenue. The only money we had coming in was the money from West Rock Hill and Sellersville. So we are putting together a plan. We've had a long discussion about it. We decided not to come back to the township and the borough yet and beg for money. We've decided that in the 50 years this pool's been open, there's been a lot of people in the, in the county or in this end of the county, I mean, not just West Rock Hill and Sellersville, but the whole area that have used that pool. Their grandchildren have used it. It's, you know, there's people come there with two and three generations of their family with them. So we've decided to go the route of GoFundMe. GoFundMe just started a nonprofit section for nonprofit organizations, and they supply a link where we can go out and see if there's anybody in the community that wants to give to the pool. We've had a lot of support since, since we've shut it down. People upset it's closed, but they totally understand, and they said they would support us. We've also found someone who's willing to buy all the, all the piping to fix it. So that's going to be for free, and we also have someone who's, who's offered to come in and help us dig out and, and take out the cement. So we are going to do this as much as we can with volunteer help, and at this point, I'm not asking for any more money, but I wanted everybody to understand where we were with the pool. So that's all I have right now. So is there any questions?
Yes, I have a couple. I have a question. I have a comment. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your efforts there. With your explanation of just what you explained, I think that's very very nice that you could, you could look outside the box there. And I would like to ask you also about the zip line. Is it too late to maybe put that on hold due to the, due to the circumstances, what you saw with this, with this pipe and the, and the cracks? Or is that something that's already been purchased?
That was purchased the end of last year, and they have their down payment, and we just owe the $5,000 on the remainder. And that money, by the way, was donated to the pool.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So that's donated money. We cannot use that for anything else. And like I said, the other company, the company Terra Vita in Sellersville actually purchased it for us. We just, we're just holding that remainder of the money. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, if I get a motion to approve the Joint Rec Authority report?
So moved.
Second?
Yep, I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion passes. Tax collector report. Suzanne Clark.
Okay. For the month of July, for annual taxes, I've collected $3,458.32 in annuals, in interims, $40.57. No streetlight tax so far for the month of July. So collections are starting to level out, obviously. But I just want to let you know that I did mail out to all of our residents who had not satisfied their March 1st tax bill, noticed that the extension granted by West Rock Hill Township and Bucks County for the face period to go to July 30th. I mailed everyone a postcard telling them that they still had until the 30th to pay without any further penalty. So those cards did go out in the mail the other day, and I'm already starting to get payment in from people realizing that they forgot to pay it. Happy to know that they still can pay it without paying penalty. And I wanted to let everybody know that I have moved my office back up front to the building. I now have a front door entrance. Thank you to the Board, Board of Supervisors for moving me back up there. And my request was I'm going to ask you if you could possibly move the mailbox that I had installed in the side of the building for my old office entrance for people to drop off payments anytime, if that could be moved to the front of the building to not confuse people, because now they're still going to the back, they're still trying to get into the side to into my office, which obviously you can't anymore, and now it's just confusing people. So I was wondering if I could get the, get that box moved up to the front of the building. And that was my question.
Okay, I'll open that up to David and Jay.
This is Mr. Kaiser. I have no, no problem with moving that for Suzanne.
Okay. David?
I have no problem, because I think just from a handicap perspective, it's probably a pretty good idea to do that.
And I would agree. So Suzanne, I don't even know if we need to take a vote on this. We will just make sure it gets moved.
Well, my other question would be, is it possible that one of your guys could move that for me? In the past, my husband would, had hung that on the building for me, but right now he's not capable to hang it up there. I could hang it up there with his assistance, but I won't guarantee it will be straight, so it's, it's up to you.
I don't have a problem with that. I know Jim, Jim, you don't want Jim out there doing that, and I-
Greg can handle it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Okay. Any questions for the tax collector? Hearing none, can I approve the tax collector's report?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Jay. Second? I'll second it.
David will second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Engineers report. Steve Bala?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Chris Durstein had indicated-
as Chris Durstein had indicated, we have the, uh, Fresco Systems facility expansion on the agenda. Uh, we do have a representative, uh, their engineer, I believe is on the call tonight, Scott Pestersky. And Sherry, could you pull up the, the plan? For Fresco? And go to the second sheet? Thank you. And at this point, I'll just let Scott, uh, give you an overview of the project.
Scott, there?
He's still on the call.
I don't think he is.
He was on earlier.
Oh, there he is. He's, I see his name again. Scott, are you, could you hear us?
You on mute?
Just had him mute go on and off.
Yeah, it says it's working.
Could you give us an overview, Steve?
Of course I can. So, um, Scott, if anytime you could, you can chime in if, if your thing starts working. Uh, you can see on this plan, the rear of the building, there's, um, three areas of dark gray. And those are the three building expansions. The uppermost, I believe, is the plastics building. Uh, the second, uh, center is another part of the building. I believe that's called Building Three. And the lower one is an expansion to the loading dock. Uh, they've done some other minor expansions in the rear of the building over the years, but this is, this is more substantial than, than was done before. And because of these building expansions, uh, they had to reconfigure the parking lot in the rear of the facility. So it says, uh, the lighter gray areas is the new, the new parking areas, employee parking to the rear of the building. And with that, they also, uh, sort of the medium gray, they realigned the loop road that goes around uh, the back of the building. Uh, and just for reference, where Chris had indicated the proximity to the, to the towers, the, the uppermost addition, uh, yeah, right where the hand is now, that, that's where the silos are. So you can see the dark gray upper addition, uh, gets closer to those silos. Uh, so they were non-conforming to begin with, but this increases the, increases the non-conformity. We have, uh, our July 7th, 2020 review letter, I believe was in your packets. The planning commission had recommended several, uh, waivers or, uh, recommended approval of several, several waivers. They were in item two of my letter. Uh, they include a reduction of, uh, or fee in lieu of for a few, a reduction in a few of the rear parking area trees. Cause it's too tight to fit all the trees in. Um, a traffic study. Uh, again, that's been, that's been waived on a few prior projects and the planning commission's caveat was this will be the last project that they grant or recommend a waiver for traffic study in any future projects that they will need to consider doing a full traffic study. Uh, street improvements is the same thing. Uh, this would be the last project that they want to waive. Uh, street improvements for, uh, stormwater ba- management basin. There's a, there's a stormwater basin to the, to the rear of the site. It's always been there, uh, kind of a shallow basin that they're expanding. It's sort of a chatty corner from the old, uh, church. It was a Mennonite church. I, I'm not sure what the name of the church is now. Uh, and the planning commission had asked that to be fenced in because there's a playground back on the church property. And they are agreeing to do that. Uh, there is also reserved parking area. They do not need all the parking that's required by zoning. So there would need an agreement for, uh, to allow them to create a reserved parking area. And there's a few minor stormwater, uh, like pipe size type, uh, waiver requests, which we have no, no objection to. Uh, they are working with Telford Borough Authority on their water and sewer, uh, supply. There's a small increase in the, in the usage for the property. Uh, otherwise there, uh, there's just outside agency approvals. They need their Conservation District approval and, uh, and an PDES permit. And they're willing to make a contribution to the Park and Rec Fund. So that said, the plan's in, in pretty good order. The, um, planning commission has made a recommendation for preliminary final approval. And they would be looking for your endorsement to have a resolution prepared for next month's meeting.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Uh, Steve, you said that, that the detention basin was shallow. Why would the planning commission require a fence to be put around it if it was shallow? Can you, can you tell me how shallow?
I, what I, what I meant to say is there was an existing basin that was shallow. They're reconstructing it to a deeper basin. And that's in part why the planning commission had asked for the, the, for the, um, for the fence.
Got you. Okay, thanks. Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Jay?
Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, I have, oh, Dave, I'm sorry.
Yeah, anything else, David?
No, I want to hear what Mary has to say.
Okay, yeah, we all do.
I, I just have questions that I'll need to have answered to prepare the resolution. The first has to do with, um, the, the basin and the fence to protect the church play yard. That's listed under 2D under waivers. What exactly is being waived?
Okay, to clarify that, they requested a waiver to have no fence. The planning commission recommended a fence. So essentially it should not be a waiver. We're not granting the waiver.
Okay, no waiver.
Correct.
Um, and then they, the second one, we talk about, um, reserve park, the other one I wanted to ask about, reserve parking?
Correct.
How many spaces are being put in reserve?
I'm just looking at their parking totals. 223.
223 spaces in reserve. And that's tied up with Woodlands requirements? I, I'm not clear on that.
We have the, we have a reforestation provision in the ordinance. If you clear trees down below a certain percentage of the site, you have to replace, find repl- areas for replacement trees. Well, the wooded area that would be affected is where the reserve parking goes. So as long as they don't build the reserve parking, they have enough trees on the property. When they build the reserve parking, they will have, they will go below the minimum amount of trees. So they would either need to plant more trees or come to an agreement with the township for a contribution.
So the reserve parking agreement should indicate that when the parking spaces are, if and when the parking spaces are installed, um, the reforestation requirements will have to be addressed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, could I get, uh, a, a, a motion to have our solicitor prepare the resolution for preliminary final approval?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. Can I have a second?
Uh, David will second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution, uh, that passes then. Okay. Uh, okay, Steve?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'd just like to say, I, I'm seeing a chat from Scott Pestersky, the engineer. So he, he's having problems communicating, but he can't hear what's going on. So if you did have a question for him, he could, he could respond by chat if he had to. Uh, but we've taken care of everything. Uh, that's all I have on, on the agenda unless there's any other questions.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the engineers' report?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution, or the, um, motion passes, uh, solicitors' report?
Um, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item under the solicitors' report this evening is the, um, execution of the Gavin, at long last, development agreements. We have a stormwater management agreement, a, um, financial security agreement, a memorandum of development agreement and a development agreement. They're rather standard in nature. They follow along in, in line with your, um, previous approvals. And they have been properly executed by the developer and in the case of the financial security agreement by the bank. And they are before you this evening for consideration.
Okay. I will take them all together and see if there's a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. And the second?
I will second.
Thank you, David. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you have anything else for us tonight?
No, Mr. Chairman, and I'll bring the originals of these agreements, um, drop them off at the township building for you to sign.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I, I will make a motion to, uh, approve the solicitors' report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, David. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Um, motion passes. Township managers' report. Mr. Lippin caught.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're having a slight problem with getting the agenda back up, the PowerPoint. We're working on it right now. Uh, but my, uh, first, my thing is the solar, oh, there it goes.
There you go. Okay. Uh, why don't I just take over then? How about that?
Okay.
Okay, um, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we had looked at solar back in 2015. We were looking at a rather small system. It would have cost us at the time about a hundred thousand dollars or maybe a little more. And we would have gotten no kickback. I only use the word, we would have gotten no rebates. We would have had no way to recuperate any of the money other than to just save on solar. And it would have taken us, I think, 18 of the 20 years life expectancy to regain our money, just to break even. Well, times have changed. Um, we're in a situation now where a lot of the pricing has come down. We've got, um, uh, uh, other options besides just financing it ourselves. And, uh, Dr. Vera Cole and I have been working on this for the last couple of months. And I'm, I've asked Dr. Cole to present this tonight. You, most of you know Vera. I would just say that, uh, I have pulled up her bio here and she's president of the Middle Atlantic Renewable Energy Association. She's an active speaker, active speaker and writer on topics related to solar sustainability and policy. She's author of Pennsylvania Homeowner's Guide to Smaller Electricity. She has appearances on, uh, NPR as a speaker there on several occasions. She was, in 2017, she was awarded the Epstein Lifetime Achievement Award for Sustainability by the Sustainable Energy Fund. From 2010 to 2018, she was the lead faculty for Energy and Sustainability Pro- uh, Policy Programs at Penn State University. She was responsible for curriculum planning and development, uh, faculty recruitment, student advising, development and taught, uh, she developed and taught online classes in energy pol- uh, energy policy and management. So, um, Vera, I want to thank you for coming. I want to thank you for helping and doing most of the legwork on this actually. So I will turn it over to you. Want to mute?
So, uh, so, so for all the engineering work, how do I work the mute button? Uh, thanks for that. Um, so yeah, so this presentation is, uh, is to request, uh, to get the ball rolling. And again, I know that it had been started years ago, but to give another shot at solar for the township. And, uh, to get the ball rolling and request that the township issue two, request for proposals related to getting onsite, um, solar installation, uh, solar electricity installed on a township property. So next slide, please. So the goal would be, um, of this project would to be to meet 100% of the township's electricity needs with solar that's generated onsite. And I, I want to clarify that when we say that West Rock Hill Township's needs, um, we, we don't mean the whole township, not all the businesses and residences here, but it means the township itself. The actual, the, the township building, the services we provide, all that the township purchases electricity for right now. Those are the needs that we're looking to meet with onsite solar. Um, so why would we want to do this? The, um, the, the first reason would be to save money for the township, to save, um, uh, to provide maximum long-term savings on what we currently pay for electricity. Um, a, a solar installation of a, of a good size also would protect the township from future increases in electricity prices. Um, because when, with a solar installation, they last for decades. And once it's, once it's paid for and installed, you pretty much know how much your electricity, how much you're going to pay for your electricity for the life of the system with, with a great deal of certainty. Um, so if we had access to, uh, to, you know, cost-effective or low-cost, uh, electricity that was generated on-site, that would allow us for more opportunities to save other money and do other environmental things like, uh, using more electric vehicles. That would be, uh, more cost-effective than it might be now. Uh, a solar installation on the township property would, uh, would build on our record of sound environmental stewardship and would be another good step and good, uh, example in that direction. And also it could provide a great opportunity for township residents and businesses who may be curious about solar to see it firsthand and to learn more about its operation and technology firsthand and help, help make an informed decision about what they may or may not like to do on their own properties. Uh, next slide, please. It's nice having a driver. Um, so thank you, Sherry. Um, so there's two RFPs that, that, uh, we would be recommending. One would be an RFP for the installation, the design and installation of the system itself. And the second RFP would be one related to a solar investor partnership. And I'll kind of explain briefly what, uh, what we would mean by both of those. So that, next slide, please. So with the solar installation, the first consideration would be the size of it in terms of power, like how, what's the capacity that we would need? Well, looking at past, uh, electricity bills for the township, uh, the township uses about 85,000 kilowatt hours a year of electricity. Um, there's an, uh, a website, a, an application in the cloud called PV Watts. It's put out by the National Renewable Energy Lab. And you can go to that website and enter information about a system and its location. And then the website uses the system size and historical weather data. So it's got decades and decades of data of, about weather in our area. And it uses those two factors to, to estimate how much electricity a, a system would generate. So using that, uh, NRL, uh, PV Watts app, uh, says that a 70 KW system in, uh, the Sellersville area could be expected to generate a long-term average of about 90,000 kilowatt hours per year. Um, so that level of output would be a little more than what the township is currently using. And it would give us the opportunity to cost-effectively add, like I mentioned, other services, uh, electric vehicles is probably the first thing that would come to mind. Um, and then I would also add, because of the size of this system, that, um, Pennsylvania does have a, a strong, a net metering program. And if we were, if the township were to find itself at the end of a, of a year, having generated more electricity than we actually used, uh, we would get a cash credit back. We would get credit back from the utility company. Uh, it wouldn't be for the, quite the full, it would be evaluated at the price to compare, not the full price of the, of electricity, but we would get cash back for any extra electricity that we had sent to the grid over the course of a year. Uh, next slide, please. So if the, uh, if 70 KW is the, the power capacity that we would want for a system, like how big would that be? Well, if we said, if we, if we just picked, uh, you know, about a 40 watt module, which is kind of standard these days. So a 40 watt module would, that we would need about 175 of them to generate for a 70 KW system. So every module is about 65 by 40 inches. So if you work the numbers out, that would mean we would need about 3,200 square feet uh, just for the modules. Uh, then of course the modules need to be arranged. They need to be in rows and the rows need to be spaced apart. And there needs to be some racking and clearances and other kind of things. But, uh, so 3,200 square feet is just kind of the, the starting point for the modules themselves. Now, the, the field right around the township building is, um, it's, is a good site for solar. It, it's, it's open. It's, uh, almost completely unshaded. It's big and it's near the existing electrical service, uh, right there in the township building. Um, and because of its size and location, it would allow for flexibility in the module arrangement so that we could minimize shading and, and, uh, minimize installation costs. So there's room to space the rows out and to lay things out in an optimum way. My next slide, please. So just to give a, finally, there's a picture, right? So just to, it's just to give a sense of scale here. That, um, so that's the township building that we're looking at. And the area within that little red triangle there is 5,000 square feet. little red triangle there is 5,000 square feet. So depending on exactly how the modules were laid out, that kind of gives you a sense of the size of the array relative to the property that we would be talking about here.
May I interrupt you a minute, Vera?
I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes. Just first, but this is Jay Kaiser.
Sure. Hi, Jay.
Hi. The area there that you have allocated in red, we had discussed a couple of years ago when we were increasing the park over to this side and the possibility of soccer fields and stuff being over here, that that side there from behind the township building down along that side, where there's brush in that, in that drawing is the red triangle, to be possible for future parking lot for that side of the park there at the Moore Farm. I don't know if, Jim, you remember that? Or if that was taken in consideration when this was drawn together?
Yeah, this is, this is just for sizing effort. We could move that much closer to the building. Would actually save us a lot of electricity because the wires running from the solar back up to the building, they lose a little bit of electricity as it transfers. So I'd actually talked about that yesterday, moving it closer to the building, and that would open that up, Jay, for parking.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, no, that was good. And I'm glad you helped make that point, that it wasn't specifically at that location. I was just trying to give a sense of scale of, you know, just to kind of eyeball it of what, what the size of the array we would be talking about for 70 kW.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of flexibility. There's a lot of great ways that a solar could be laid out on the site, depending on what other factors there may be. Okay, so that's kind of sums up what the RFP, the main details for an RFP for the solar design and installation itself. So a 70 kW system in the area of the township building on a site that, in a particular layout that would make the most sense for the, as far as supportive supervisors is concerned, and installation itself. Okay, the next slide, please. So the other RFP we would recommend would be one for a solar investor partnership. And the reason for this is that the federal government provides significant tax benefits to encourage investment in solar. But because the tax, but because the township isn't a taxpaying entity, we can't take advantage of these tax incentives. So there are ways that we could work with a qualified third-party investor who can use the tax benefits. And so they could take advantage of the tax benefits, and there's mechanisms where they could pass many of these, some of these, I just say some of here, but they could pass a lot of these savings on to the township. So the two tax credits, or tax benefits that would be of most interest would be the investment tax credit or the ITC. And that's a typo. It should say 26%. I'm sorry about that. It should be 26% of the project cost. So that's a tax credit for a full 26% of the project cost, not a write-off, but an actual tax credit. The other tax benefit would be rapid depreciation. And in this case, we could use, there's some situations where it could be one year, but it's definitely within five years that the full cost or 87% of the cost of the system could be depreciated over five years for someone who could use the depreciation. Next slide, please. So if, so that would be, so the solar partnership, and in fact, just to recap that last one, so that solar partnership would be an RFP for a third party to propose to us ways of working together where they could take advantage of the tax, they could make use of the tax benefits and pass a good bit of those savings along to us. So if we, if we take those two ideas together and we talk about like very, at this point, a very, very preliminary financial assessment. Basically, I think of the financial assessment at this point just to say, is it promising enough to do the RFPs? Because there's so many details that we won't know until we get some answers, some responses back. But we can expect, it's pretty reasonable, expect an installation cost of around $2.25 a watt. So if this is a 70 kW system, the total project cost would be about $157,500. So then to look at, to think in terms of what are the financial payback from this, well, we could assume, just for now, a current electricity prices. We assume that the solar system is going to be useful for 30 years, which is, some people assume longer at this point, though the modules themselves are typically warranted for at least 25 years. And that's a performance warranty. And the inverters are also warranted usually 20 to 25 years, which is much longer than they used to be. And especially in the case of the modules, it's not that they stop working. Rarely does a module stop working. It's just gets a slow, slow degradation over time. And so the warranties are usually like in 30 years, you'll still have, or 25 years or 30 years, you'll still have at least 80% performance. And studies by others have shown that even, that in the vast majority of cases, modules still exceed even that after 30 years. So anyway, and then, and then also depending on the, on the terms of the, you know, exactly how much the installation costs to start with, and what the terms of the investor RFP looks like, once we get some responses to that, the total savings to the township over the life of the system, looking at my numbers, are estimated between like 166 to $220,000 over the life of the system. In terms of payback, there's the promise that within nine to 14 years, again, depending on assumptions, the system would be paid off. And then the system is going to still sit there on the township property and generate electricity for years and years and years. In this case, you know, 16 to 20 years of free electricity that would continue to flow out of the system once we recover our investment. So when both terms of the, when the terms of these RFPs are known, we can do a much better job of estimating the cost, the cash flow, and the long-term, the payback and long-term savings of the system. But right now, so that's why these are just presented as ranges. And I would also add that as, it's, none of us that I know of has a crystal ball, but if electricity prices go up in the future, the more they go up, the more the system will pay off. So if and when electricity prices increase over the next 30 years, our investment in solar would have been better. But we won't know that for sure till 30 years from now, how that works. Next slide, please. And I talked about the, you know, being good environmental stewards. These are two online tools that the EPA publicizes for use for understanding air quality and greenhouse gas emissions. And using these, a 70 kW system in our area would have the same air quality and greenhouse benefits as if we took 14 cars off the road for 30 years. This is kind of a understandable equivalent, instead of talking about tons of greenhouse gases, which none of us can really compute. Next slide, please. So, and just wrapping this up, there's some other considerations that we want to keep in mind, hopefully as we move forward in this. One of them is plans for land use for maintenance and upkeep of the area where the installation is put in. Also fencing requirements, if any, and how we would want to handle that. Virtual metering setup. What that means is the township is responsible now for a lot of different, there's a lot of electrical meters, separate meters that are used to support township services. And we would want all of those meters virtually bundled together into one account for use for the net metering for this system. And that's, there's provisions for how to do that. It would just need to be done. And it's, it's just an administrative thing. There's no, there's no, there's nothing physical about doing that. It's all virtual. We'd want to be sure, of course, about cost and responsibility for maintenance over time. And the RFPs, we would want to be mindful of the criteria for components, warranties, certifications, code requirements, those kind of things. And at some point, it would be, I think it would be wonderful to think about educational opportunities that this might open up for us to share with residents and businesses in the town who might want to learn, or the township who may want to learn more about how these systems work. All the inverters now have, provide their data and operational information online in the cloud that we could easily share with others if we wanted to, about how the system is working long-term and right this minute. And then I know the township, I think, is already considering an energy audit and other steps to make sure that we are using energy as efficiently as possible. And I think we would all agree that the cheapest and cleanest kilowatt-hours is the one we never buy or use at all. So with that, I'm hoping that the Board of Supervisors may consider issuing two RFPs to take us on the next step of considering solar for the township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next slide.
Oh, yeah, there is one more slide, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I'll address this since Vera said thank you already. We will take questions and comments. You can send them directly to the township at 1028 Ridge Road, or you can call the number and leave a message, or you can use the info@westrockhill township.org if you want to make comments. This would be ongoing. This is not just for tonight. This is if you have comments or questions along the way. Additional to what Vera mentioned, there's one more opportunity that an investor would have, and that's called an SREC. SRECs are solar renewable energy credits. And for a system of this size, which would come in at 90-some K of energy generated a year, that would be 90 credits. And right now, credits in Pennsylvania go for about $50 a credit. So it'd be another $4,000, $4,500. And the credits, you can, you can, you can get credits from like a five different states and the District of Columbia, depending on where you're licensed. And I know New Jersey's credits are probably twice as good as ours because they have a lot more going on as far as solar goes. Anyway, so it depends on where you buy them. But I just use, use $50 per credit, which is a megawatt of electricity that you would sell to, that the third party would sell and get cash back. So that'd be another $4,000, $4,500, $4,500 a year for the life of six years, until they sold it back to us. So just another way to get some money back. Thank you very much, Vera. I mean, this is great. Does anyone have any questions? Greg, was there any questions written?
David Collingwood has a question.
Okay.
Real quick, is battery backup required for this? Or would that be included?
Go ahead, Vera.
No, I was going to suggest that you or Greg reply to that.
Yeah, yeah. Greg and I talked about this a lot. It would be so wonderful if we had battery backup, but the cost, we just didn't find the cost to be worth it because the beginning of this year, end of last year, beginning of this year, Greg and Sheri and Linda really put their heads together and started finding ways that we didn't have to work in the township building. So everything's cloud-based now. All of our data is cloud-based. They can work from home. If anything happens, they can just stay home and work as if they were in the building. So knowing that, it wasn't worth the extra cost, which would have been thousands of dollars. So we just.
An emergency operation area at the Pen Ridge Regional. We can also set up there. If you had to be in a building, we can set up a Pen Ridge Regional.
Yeah. So, and Greg would rather visit with Rod than, you know, sit in the township building. So anyway, so yeah, so that was our reasoning. Thank you, David. Anyone else have any questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Has any calculation been done? When this system's over with, what would it cost to get rid of it? Or what would we do? Would we replace it with something else? Is there, is there, has there any thoughts on that? Or is there a calculation somewhere we could find?
Well, first of all, yeah. I don't know if there's a calculation of what it's going to be like to tear a system down in 30 years from now. The technology changes all the time. But I did look up, you did have a question I was going to bring up from last meeting about recycling. There are companies out there already that do the recycling. They tear the, they tear the equipment down. They recycle all the parts, just like they do other electronic parts. And I think Steve Bala also mentioned that at the end of the meeting last time. So as far as the actual cost, I have no idea. I mean, we could reuse the frame, possibly, if we wanted to replace it with newer panels, or who knows what the technology is going to be 35 or 40 years from now.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
There was a comment from Jeff Trinkle asking, what is the expected annual maintenance cost for the 70-kilowatt solar system? Are they figured into the payback analysis?
Go ahead, Vera.
Yeah, the, that's, that's really a kind of a tricky question. We've gone back and forth on, because there's really, this is, sounds crazy, but there's really no maintenance on the PV system per se. Once it's installed and once it's operating, it just really sits there and operates. And our climate, we have enough rain that it cleans them. They don't really get dirty. There's no really, there's no real recommended maintenance. But you do need to keep an eye on them. And every now and then, there will be an issue with the, you know, with something interfering with the wire, or there may be an issue with an inverter failing, especially if you use microinverters. We need to monitor those. So as far as the actual, there's, there's no good published data about a percentage to use or a factor to use in terms of broadly estimating the maintenance cost, except that generally, it's a very low number. And we would be able to do a better job of that once we have some RFPs and know the technology that the installers are recommending. I hope that helps.
He said thank you. Okay, Jeff. Are there any other questions?
I have none.
Okay. Well, then.
What is it you're looking for, David, here, Jim, for tonight?
I would like to see us allow the township to move forward and create the two RFPs, one for an installer and one for a third party to have for the next meeting, so we can decide whether we want to move forward. I'll tell you, we are on a tight timeline with this. I have to say that. The 26% tax credit that Vera talked about runs out at the end of the year. So that would take a big advantage away from any third party who wants to come in and help us. So we looked out at the months, if we were to create, if we were to approve putting two RFPs together, we would approve it tonight, and next month we decided we wanted to move forward with it. And then we would have to wait two months before we could even bring it back for a vote. We're getting very close to the end of the year. And I would rather see us have an extra month at the end if we decide to move forward this, rather than try and rush a third party into something that they might need a little more time for. So, so my question tonight is, could we move forward with the two RFPs and have them, have our solicitor and engineer draw them up to have available for our next meeting for discussion and decide if we want to move forward? Meanwhile, Vera and I can work with Greg on a lot of those questions that were on the last page, and just see where we are with things like the energy audit and stuff. I know Greg has been looking into that already.
David here. So the request for proposal, they're non-binding, and the minimal expense would be for the solicitor and the township engineer, correct?
That is correct. And Mary had a question.
Just, just a comment. We would have to be bid specs, not an RFP.
Oh, bid specs. Okay. All right. Thank you. And Steve, did you have a comment?
No, I just say, we'll need to work closely with, with you and Vera Cole on some of the specifications. And we'll have to come up with a sort of a grading system for how we're going to analyze these proposals when we get them in. So we could, you know, compare apples to apples and have a fair method of selecting, for selection in the end.
Even better, if either Vera or Jim have an RFP or a spec that's been done somewhere else, it gives us a great place to start and can save the township a tremendous amount of time. Because if Steve and I have to create these, it will, it's going to take a little time.
Okay. We do have the one from five years ago, but I don't know how accurate that would be or how much help it would be. We can check around. I will, I will, for full disclosure here, say Vera and I have been working with two, two separate large-scale installers who have been very helpful in finding information for us and helping us spec out some stuff and giving us data on, on payback and things like that. So I think, I think we can do that. We would also have to come up with a PowerPoint, not a PowerPoint, a power purchase agreement, a PPA for the third party, which we would, would basically be our contract with them. And it would, it would determine how much they want to charge us for electricity during that six-year period while they're getting their depreciation, how much they would expect us to buy it back at the end of the time. There's a few variables there that we won't know until we get stuff back. But I understand, Mary.
And, and the agreement actually has to be part of the bid specs. So that'll make it just a little bit more complicated.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, we'll work with you and Steve on this, assuming that the board agrees to let us move forward with putting together. Assuming that the board agrees to let us move forward with, with putting together the bid specs. So I will make a motion to put forward, or to move forward with the bid specs to have something available, hopefully by the next meeting for us to discuss and decide where we want to move, how we want to move forward. Would I have a second on that?
I would have seconded that, David Collingwood.
And Jay, would you like to comment before we vote?
Yes, I'm, I don't know how much, what's the cost going to be from engineering and legal counsel to prepare this? Has any, has any discussion or thoughts of that been put into place on this?
Jay, it completely depends on whether we're creating our own documents or whether we get to start from something somebody else did, unless Steve, unless you have a different thought.
No, okay.
No, I totally agree with you, Mary. If we have a starting plan, it'll be much easier.
Yeah, that's our plan to get that.
David, would Vera have a lot of contacts in the industry where she could probably find that information? There's got to be a template or a model out there somewhere that we could copy or use as a guide.
Yeah, I would be glad to help try to find something that was as close or as suitable as possible.
Yeah, I could also, I could also scan the ten bid system and see if there's any other municipalities that put out similar bids this year.
Okay.
That would, yeah, that would be great. Yeah, because the tricky part is for me is, you know, bids that were done by municipalities. You know, that would closely align with what we're looking to do.
Yes, yeah. Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions, Jay?
Nope. Fine, thanks.
Well, then, I made a motion. David seconded it. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And.
Mary, did you have something?
Well, my thirty-second Google search, I came up with bid specs for solar photovoltaic system nearby Rochelle wastewater treatment plant. So I think, yeah, I think we're going to find some stuff in it, but we'll need, we have, Steve and I have no expertise in this, so we will need you and Vera to help go over and tell us what's appropriate and what's not. And we can, we can handle the legal and engineering parts of it.
Great, thank you. We had a vote. There was all in favor, so the motion passes. And I will also say that I have been since December, even November, on the county's Sustainable Energy Subcommittee. And I know there are three suppliers of large solar companies on there. So I will reach out to them also and see what they might be able to help us with. Everyone's interested in doing this in Bucks County, at the county level and at the municipal level, and look at ways we can work together to put in solar and have the whole county do this. So this is a good start. If we can take this back to the county level now, if I can take it back to the county level and see maybe we can even get some more support there. So, thank you, everyone. All right, I think that's it. Greg?
Correct.
Okay. Moving on, do you have anything else, Greg?
That's it.
And I will make a motion to approve the manager's report. Do I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor? Aye. All right, old business.
I had one thing, Mr. Chairman.
What was that? Go ahead.
I had one thing.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
The Allentown Road and Finland Road situation there. Did Greg hear anything back from, from Pendott?
Yes, he did. They finished it, they finished it the day we were having our meeting.
Really?
So they finished that, and they also did other state roads as well in West Rock Hill Township with the anti-skid surface.
Wonderful, great.
That project is finally closed.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. One other issue then, the James property, the barn on the James property. We said we would look for a solution for that barn before we would move forward.
Are we under, excuse me, David here, are we under old business or have we approved the manager's?
I'm sorry, that is, we're still under old business. Because this was discussed before.
Okay.
Okay. I reached out to the Historical Society, and the Historical Society reached out to the Executive Committee, who unanimously said they would like to take over the barn if, if we were to agree as a township to allow them, or to make repairs to the roof, they will take it over and do all future repairs. They want to make it part of the overall project there, more of a homestead with the barn and the house, and really restore the whole place. They then reached out to their general membership. The membership came back with a huge response to please move forward with this. So I think, I think based on what the Historical Society has already done with the house, I can't imagine that the barn is going to be anything but spectacular when it's done. Jay, I understand your situation where you felt that it needed too much repair, but I do know that the summer beam had already been fixed or shored up. And by us fixing this roof, they were willing to take it over. They have already got masons, I know, lined up to do, to do work in the house. They've done a lot of interior work in the house, and they wanted to add the barn to the property also. So.
My concern, my concern, Mr. Chairman, was not to spend taxpayers' money. I am one hundred percent in favor of saving the barn, and it sounds like they want to do that. The issue for me was, and I made it clear, I do not, I do not feel that it's appropriate to spend taxpayer money on that. That's all.
Okay, and my position on that is that we own that, we own the house, we own the barn. And just like if we had to replace the roof on the Moore property, we have to replace the roof here. And then, but we're not replacing the whole roof, we're just fixing that one section. So I just feel like this is a township-owned building, and we, we need to, we need to step up and do this part of it. So that would be my opinion. We had some bids out there. I know the one bid was from an organization in Redding area that.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that. From experience. Regardless of what we decide tonight, this is just for information only. Back in March, the township manager requested proposals to fix the barn roof. And Recknuck Builders from Lancaster County came in with a bid to completely redo the roof and to do it properly, straightening the rooster tails, the rafter ends, installing two-by-eight faceboards, putting in new five-inch oversized gutters on the, on the barn, and basically doing a complete job. Their experience locally is they have, they've worked, they work pretty much in the tri-state area, but they, locally, they've done the, the building over in Silverdale, Bolton's, when they redid their building, their farm market. And we also got a bid from, an estimate from Scott Rittenhouse. He was the high bid, but I will tell you that Scott actually uses Recknuck Builders from Lancaster, he had them build two buildings on his, his farm on Allentown Road. So there's a builder endorsing another builder. We also had a first estimate from Tim Schaefer. And it was the low bid, but it was not comparing apples to apples. So Greg went back to Tim Schaefer and had the same requirements that the Lancaster builders met. And the bids were within a thousand dollars of each other, doing the same work, comparing apples to apples.
Okay. Well, I guess I would, I would like to use the group from Lancaster. Because we know the kind of work to do. They do have the reputation. And I'm sure the Historical Society wants to keep this as accurate as possible to the way it should be.
I think we first have to decide, do we want to do it?
Okay, yes, yes, that's true. And I am in favor of doing it. I will make a motion to move forward with repairing that roof and then turning the, okay, let's just start that. I will, I will make a motion to repair the roof.
Using which estimate?
Using, using the estimate from the group in Lancaster. Mary, you look.
I'm, I don't know how much the estimate was from the group in Lancaster, and Greg's going to interrupt me here.
We're good, we're good. It's, it's under the nineteen thousand.
All right, so they, they still have to get three quotes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's three quotes.
Okay, all right, okay.
But you have three, correct? You have Schaefer, you have Rittenhouse, and you have Recknuck.
Yeah.
We have three quotes.
Okay, and I'm, I'm making a recommendation. I'll make a motion that, that we move forward with the quote from Recknuck. Would I have a second?
I would second that, David Collingwood.
Okay.
I think, Jay, I know is going to have a comment.
Oh. I think, I, well, let's just go ahead and vote, because Jay's already made his comment.
He, yeah, I made my comment. You know my opinion. You know, you know my position on this.
Yeah, yeah. And honestly, I think we've saved a lot of money this year. And some of that money, in fact, all of that money that we've saved has been, a lot of it has been going right back into the township. And this, to me, is going right back into township also. So all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
No.
Two to one. And the motion passes. Secondly, then, I would make a motion for Mary to amend the lease with the Historical Society to add the barn to the existing lease, and there would be no other changes to the lease. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? I will make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, two to one. Thank you. That motion passes. I think that's all I have under old business. Jay or David, do you have any other old business?
David has none.
No.
Okay, none, okay. New business? David or Jay? None, okay.
None, David.
No, okay, I have none either. We'll move on to public comment. Greg, you have public comments?
I do. The first one is Christine Shelley. Thanks to the board. This is a challenging situation for all of us regarding Adelphia. We appreciate your continued efforts. The second one is from Cliff Cole. I have comments I would like to make public comment portion pertaining to the answers of the confirmed appointment.
Okay, give me a second. I have this written down. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. We would like to express our gratitude for Jim Millers and Vera Cole's, no relation to Cliff Cole, wonderful presentation on green energy. It is refreshing that somebody in our township actually cares about clean energy. A compressor station is a polar opposite of the proposed solar installation. It'd be nice to see the supervisors publicly present the same amount of information on what a compressor station really is. Also, during our question time during our confirmed appointment, Mary stating that the township does not have a right to monitor air quality is patently false. Pennsylvania's Air Pollution Control Act includes a section that was incorporated into state law thirty-five PS four, forty-twelve, a statute that specifically allows local governments in the state to have stricter air pollution laws in the state or federal clean air laws. And this is Pennsylvania statute, statute title thirty-five, Health and State Safety, Chapter twenty-three, Air Pollution. Nothing in this act shall be construed as stopping the Commonwealth or any district attorney, solicitor of a municipality from proceeding in courts of law or equity to abate pollutions from forbidden, pollutions forbidden under this act or abate nuisances under existing law. It is hereby declared to be the purpose of this act to provide additional and cumulative remedies to abate the pollution of the air in the Commonwealth. Nothing in this act shall prevent counties, cities, towns, townships, or boroughs from enacting ordinance respect, with respect to air pollution, which will not be less stringent than the provisions of the Clean Air Act or the rules, regulations promulgated under either this act or the Clean Air Act. We have no faith in a solicitor for the West Rock Hill Township paid by the taxpayers' money who is representing the township in negotiations with Adelphia, a company bent on polluting our air, who is not aware of this important statute. In addition, we would like to state, how much time do I have?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. I'd like to state one of the answers to our questions about emergency preparedness. The reliance on phone lines, which was mentioned as an emergency communication system, seems like an inadequate and outdated plan for emergency notification. If there is a disaster in the compressor station, at a compressor station, I hope the township can rethink this plan if the compressor does actually become a reality. Fayette County's and Landthorpe compressor stations and spring. Okay, are examples of compressors that exploded and burned. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Cliff. We'll take your comments under advisement, and we may have some answers there for you later. Any other questions, Greg?
Yes. My mic's still on. Is my mic on? This is from Kathy Wireback. Why isn't Adelphia responsible to widen Rich Hill Road for the emergency and be required to construct a better emergency access? Charlie Alfer was required to widen and pave to sub-1355 Whalen Road. And as Chris just mentioned, someone else had to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's true. And when we get to enforce our ordinances against an applicant that's doing a project like this, we can require that the access road be widened. We are not in a position where we're reviewing plans or issuing permits for this project.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you, Kathy. Okay, Greg, anything else?
Next, this is from Ariana Alnick. It is my feeling that of the Board of Supervisors would be wise to err on the side of protecting the interest of the residents of West Rock Hill Township during any negotiations with Adelphia Gateway. As public trustees of our natural resources, it is incumbent upon the West Rock Hill Board of Supervisors to safeguard the rights of residents under Article One, Section twenty-seven of the Pennsylvania State Constitution. The Quakertown compressor station will undoubtedly result in imperable harmful impacts that will likely compromise the health and welfare of the residents who live near the proposed facility. Please prioritize the protection of the residents of West Rock Hill Township over the interest of a private corporation. You simply cannot put the price on the right to drink clean water and breathe clean air. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is from Tony. I don't know if that's a public comment or just a question to me. It says, Greg, a while back, it was, from Tony Bogner. Greg, a while back, it was talked about doing a baseline water and soil samples at the compressor site. Were they ever done?
We'll have to take that question up offline.
And from Christina Perfect. And we do not acknowledge the age of the old pipeline purpose for oil.
Okay.
That is all the public comment.
All right, thank you. All right. Seeing no more than, I believe we can make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
David will second.
Second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for attending tonight. This was a pretty long meeting, and I appreciate everybody hanging around for two hours. So thank you all very much. And good night.
Thank you.
Good night.